Yeah, all this meeting of the Richfield Planning Commission to order. Today is January 25th, 2021. Welcome back, everyone. Staff, could you please take roll call?
Yes, I will. Thank you. Chair Kwam.
Here.
Commissioner Laban.
Here.
Commissioner Penn. Commissioner Rosenberg.
Here.
Commissioner Rudolph.
Here.
Commissioner Sturza.
Here.
I see Commissioner Sturza, but I don't hear her. Give her a minute.
She could check back in. No, if you can, Brett, you can, or Commissioner Sturza, you can interrupt me once you are able to get plugged in. There she is. All right, just a little housekeeping before we get started, okay? She is. We're just finishing roll call.
Okay, I'm here, sorry. Connection issues.
Okay, six present.
Thank you. All commissioners present. All right, before we get started, I would like to remind everyone in the meeting to please raise your hand to be called. Then state your name each time you speak. We hope to make it easier for the public to follow what's happening here, and it's harder now that we're all in these little boxes. So anything we can do to help the public follow, including stating our names. An exception to raising your hand would be if you're simply moving or seconding, just, just go for it and say your, again, state your, which commissioner you are. Is that clear to everyone? Makes sense? Okay. To the public on the screen, you will see six planning commissioners and Richfield Community Development staff, who choose to be referred to by their first name, last I heard. Sometimes we have a guest at our meeting who'll be introduced to everyone. On that note, Melissa, would you like to introduce the new staff from community development?
Thank you, Chair Kwam. Commissioners, tonight I'd like to introduce Ryan Kurzas. Ryan is our new planner with the Community Development Department. He is an AICP certified planner, which means that he's nationally, he has his national accreditation. He comes to us from WSB, which is a local consultant firm, and was previously with the city of Janesville in Wisconsin. So I'm sure you all get to know Ryan very well over coming months. We're very excited to have him on board. And so, Ryan, did you have anything to add?
Well, you covered the, the quick introduction there. With, I've been in the area for a couple of years. I live here with my wife and her newborn baby, Eloise. And with WSB, I was, my specialty was day-to-day planning. So current development review and planning commission coordination was something that I'm very steeped in. So I look forward to working with this group. And yeah, let me know if you have any questions.
Thank you, Ryan, welcome. We're all happy you're here. All right, and I want to remind people to, underneath, next to your name, there's a little headphone, if you can mute it when you're not speaking. And it will turn red if you're muted. I am not able to mute myself, I was gonna demonstrate. But anyway, okay, next we have approval of the minutes of our last regular planning commission meeting, which was October 26, 2020. Do we have a motion and a second?
Commissioner Penn, so moved.
Second. Could you say your, which commissioner you are when you?
Commissioner Sturza, second.
Thank you. Any discussion about the minutes from the October meeting? Okay, Nellie, would you take roll call, please?
Yes, thank you. Chair Kwam.
Hi.
Commissioner Laban.
Hi.
Commissioner Penn. Commissioner Penn, you're muted just a minute.
Hi.
Commissioner Rosenberg. You're muted for a moment as well. Commissioner Rudolph.
Hi.
Commissioner Sturza.
Hi.
All eyes, the eyes have it, and the motion passes.
Okay, wonderful, thank you. Next is open forum, which is an opportunity for residents to address the commission on items not on tonight's agenda. And you would have up to three minutes. As of tonight's meeting, the public can now call in live to our planning commission meetings during open forum, just like you can for a public hearing. So now you have options of calling in live for both of them, and also writing or leaving a voicemail for either of them. The number, is the number the same for the public hearing call-in? Okay, I'll say the number, just in case there's any last-minute people that want to jump on, is 612-861-0651. And that's for open forum, 612-861-0651. I don't think it's been posted yet, so I don't imagine we have any call-ins. But it will be posted on our planning commission agendas and minutes page, and it's the same number as for public hearings. So we look forward to hearing from the public more now that we're virtual. We haven't heard from you as much, so I know we all are interested in that. All right. Melissa, do we have any comments for open forum?
Chair Kwam, we did not receive any comments.
Okay, thank you. Next, we have approval of tonight's agenda. Do we have a motion?
Commissioner Penn, so moved.
Commissioner Rudolph, for a second.
Thank you. Any discussion on tonight's agenda? All right, Nellie, would you take roll call, please?
Yes, thank you.
Chair Kwam.
Hi.
Commissioner Laban.
Hi.
Commissioner Penn.
Hi.
Commissioner Rosenberg.
You're muted, Commissioner Rosenberg.
Hi.
Thank you.
Commissioner Rudolph.
Hi.
And Commissioner Sturza.
Hi.
All eyes, the eyes have it, and the motion passes.
All right, thank you. Next is a public hearing. And our public hearing tonight is consideration of an amendment to a zoning designation. We're gonna give a, do something new and give a short intro to what that means. So an amendment to a zoning designation in a standalone rezoning request, the planning commission is asked to consider whether or not the requested zoning designation is in agreement with Richfield's comprehensive plan. In other words, in other words, would the new zoning code designation be consistent with the comp plan, comprehensive plan? A note to the public, Richfield's comprehensive plan was updated and adopted in 2019 and is available online, and so is our city zoning code. Okay, tonight's item for consideration is a public hearing to consider an ordinance amending the zoning designation for the property at 6945 Penn Avenue South. And I believe that the applicant is here, staff, could you read your report?
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the planning commission. The request before you tonight is a rezoning of the property at 6945 Penn Avenue. The site is currently home to the Ethos Dental Clinic, and the current zoning designation is single-family residential. Since the business predates this current application of zoning, it's considered a legal non-conforming use. As Chair Kwam mentioned, the comprehensive plan, which was recently adopted, does actually designate the site for community commercial plan, the future planned use category. The property owner is requesting to rezone the property to Neighborhood Business, which is a commercial zoning district. Thereby, staff finds that this zoning request is consistent with the comprehensive plan. There are no particular site improvements that are requested with this specific application. And following a public hearing, staff is recommending that the planning commission approve a motion to recommend that the council adopt the rezoning, again, from single-family residential to Neighborhood Business. And I'd be happy to stand for any questions that you have at this time.
Thank you, Ryan. Did the applicant, Jeffrey O'Neil, do you have anything to add right now? Otherwise, you'll have another opportunity.
I have nothing to add, I just found out about this not too long ago. It was residential, not commercial, so. I've built it for about 10 years, and it was built by my former partner back in 19, I think, 89. The Dallas Clinic back then.
All right, thank you. Commissioners, any questions or discussion? Commissioner Laban?
Yes, I just have one question, I guess, for Ryan. This sounds like it's, it's somewhat like housekeeping, getting this up to date with our current plan. Is that the case? I don't see any reason, any structural changes or any type of usage, changes that would, that would become of this. And then, if that's the case, I'm just wondering, is this something that we'll see more of if we, if we identify other properties that are kind of out of sync with our, with our current comprehensive plan, bringing them more in line from a zoning perspective?
And that's correct. That's one of the tasks of implementing the comprehensive plan is making sure that your zoning designations are consistent with the guidance. So, so to answer that question, yeah, there would be a slight coming forward. Again, this one came about because it was just one that we, we noticed, and it came in the context of a sign application. There's a little bit of a difference in terms, in terms of what's allowed for signage. But, you know, this is not a building addition, that's not a building addition or anything that intensifies the use.
Commissioner Penn?
Thank you, Chair. So is this, this is the, the new designation, is this similar to what a lot of those other businesses are? Like, pretty much like every other corner, all the way down Penn, as you run towards 76th Street? Is that, that the same designation? I didn't get a chance to review the plan for the other designations. I'm thinking of like the, it used to be like a, it's a painting place down off of like 72nd, 73rd, something like that. Are you familiar with what I'm talking about, or?
Not too familiar. The, the current zoning kind of in the, you know, couple blocks north and south, or is all residential? I'm not exactly sure about the guidance. Melissa, do you know more specifics?
Yes, Commissioner Penn. So a little additional background. Over the last two cycles of the comprehensive plan, these commercial properties, including the dental office and the paint, now paint shop that you're discussing, have gone back and forth between a residential designation and a commercial. They initially started out as a high-density residential district, which we no longer have. Then they went to residential, thinking that if these properties were to redevelop, the community would like to see them go back to low density. And then 10 years later, again, the, the thinking has changed a little bit, where these commercial properties are real assets to their neighborhoods, and they should remain this way. So there has been a back and forth. This is the same thing that we considered for the paint shop a couple of years ago. There may be some properties in there that we don't end up changing to a neighborhood designation based on where they are. But it is the same as what happened further south.
Great, thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions? Hi, this is Chair Kwam, and I'm still learning about this, but you know how there are different means for the zoning code designation and the comprehensive plans, or in this case, it's C1 Neighborhood Business District in the code. And then, what is it in the comp plan, Ryan? Community commercial?
It is community commercial.
So like, it's confusing, because it's like, why are they, but they're different for each big, big body of, you know, stuff that we work from.
Yeah, but the plan's gonna be more generalized than the zoning gets into specifics.
Okay. Any other thoughts or questions for Mr. O'Neil? No, okay, do we have, so, does someone want to make a motion? The recommendation that staff made, the recommended action in our packet? Yeah, Commissioner Penn, I mean, Commissioner Rudolph, sorry.
Yeah.
Excuse me, Melissa, I had to interject one quick thing.
I'm sorry, did we do the public hearing?
Oh, we didn't. Okay, sorry. Okay, I'm sorry, and it's been a while, it's been three months. So we'll now hear from the public on this matter. The phone number to call into our meeting right now and share your thoughts is 612-861-0651. It's the number I said before for the open forum. I'll repeat it again in a, in a moment. As indicated in the mailing related to this hearing, the legal publication and on our website, public comments is accepted via voicemail, letter, or email. You may also provide live testimony during our public hearing by calling the number, which I will repeat in a moment, provided on the agenda, provided on our planning commission agendas and minutes webpage. And that number, one more time, is 612-861-0651 for this particular issue of the rezoning. Moderator, do we have any calls? No? All right, do we have, do we have any recorded messages or emails, staff?
We did not, Chair Kwam.
Okay, little interest item. Okay, all right, and I just got a confirmation, there are no callers. All right, so would someone make a motion to close the public hearing? I'll do that. Chair Kwam, or Chair Kwam moves to close the public hearing. Commissioner Rudolph?
I'll second that.
Thank you. Discussion? Okay, Nellie, would you take role on closing the public hearing?
Yes, thank you. Commissioner Laban.
Hi.
Commissioner Penn.
Hi.
Commissioner Rosenberg.
Hi.
Commissioner Rudolph.
Hi.
And Commissioner Sturza.
Hi.
All eyes, the eyes have it.
Thanks, Nellie. Would someone like to make a motion about this recommendation? You can read it right from the packet or.
I will. As Commissioner Rudolph, I'd like to recommend approval of a rezoning of 6945 Penn Avenue South from single-family residential to Neighborhood Business, C1.
Thank you, do you have a second?
Commissioner Rosenberg, second.
Thank you. Discussion? I forgot to ask this in the, this is Chair Kwam in the, in the question portion, but I was looking at the appendix that was referred to. It's right in our, in the, in the, on this page, the ordinance that we would add the section to in section two of Appendix I of the Richfield Zoning Code. It says that a new paragraph 10 would be added. But when I, I'm just trying to understand, so when I look at section two, I see 18 items, unless I'm looking at the wrong place. Can staff help me with that? So it's Appendix I, section two, Neighborhood Business District. As far as adding a paragraph 10, I was wondering what you meant.
So that meant to replace the paragraph 10? Because I think it is shown as reserved currently? Could be mistaken.
I don't have, Chair Kwam, I don't have the code in front of me, but we will double-check that on where it should be placed in Appendix I. We will double-check that before this goes to the State Council.
Thank you. Yeah, I was mainly wanting to confirm that I understood what was being planned. So when I looked in that location, I thought maybe I'm looking at the wrong thing. All right, so they will figure out where to put that.
This used, yeah, sorry, this used to exist in the, that appendix. So the intention was to have the same language as existed before in the same place. So might have misfired on that.
Um, okay. All right, thank you. Any other discussion? Okay, Nellie, would you take role?
Yes, thank you. Chair Kwam.
Hi.
Commissioner Laban.
Hi.
Commissioner Penn.
Hi.
Commissioner Rosenberg.
Hi.
Commissioner Rudolph.
Hi.
And Commissioner Sturza.
Hi.
All eyes, the eyes have it.
Thank you. Well, thank you for attending our meeting, Mr. O'Neil, and good luck to you.
Thank you, everybody, for this. Is this something that I now know, go to the council, correct? Is that something I need to attend for this, too?
Um, I don't know. Can staff help me out?
Mr. O'Neil, typically, the first reading, this will be considered twice by the City Council. Typically, the first meeting is on a consent agenda, and they don't actually discuss it. So you wouldn't need to necessarily attend that meeting. We do always recommend that applicants attend the meeting when the council will discuss items. And Ryan will follow up with you with a letter telling you when that is and how to log on to that meeting. But yes, we would recommend that you attend that one.
Sounds good, and I think that's what, end of February or something, Ryan? Is that what I read?
Correct, it's February 23rd.
Yep.
Well, thank you, everybody, for letting me attend the meeting, and thank you for approving this at this point. I'll let you go on to your, the rest of your meeting. I don't need to attend that, I'm assuming, so. You all, good night, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Bye now.
All right, so we're already up to our liaison reports. Commissioner Rudolph, do we have community services, services advisory, Commissioner?
Yeah, you know, there, there were no particular items other to discuss, but they did discuss the community center feasibility study, and they are investigating what they can do to greater serve the community with assets that we currently have.
Thank you. Commissioner Rosenberg, anything from the City Council?
Yes, there's been a couple things happen. We do have our council members, Ben Whalen and Simon Troutman, they won reelection and were sworn in. And we have a new city council, Sean Hayford. Well, Larry, who used to be one of our chairs for the planning commission, and they were sworn in, and so he is now, they've taken their seats. And another thing that really, that happened was a presentation of the Edwina Garcia Community Builders Award. And Rick Jabs was the first one to win that. And we all know that he was on a planning commission for years and was a chair. He is also the chair of the committee that was in charge of the community, or the municipal building that, our new city hall. And right now, he's also chair of the ban shell committee. So Rick has worked very hard on a lot of different things. And so it was great that he got that, the very first award, the Community Builders Award in honor of Edwina Garcia.
Thank you, Commissioner Rosenberg. Next is Housing and redevelopment authority. This is Chair Kwam. This item isn't strictly HRA, but if you remember, we had a work session in the City Council in HRA in November to talk about potentially buying the American Legion property near Veterans Park. After lots of analysis by staff, the council decided at a work session that it was not economically feasible at this time to make that large of a purchase, and also that the city couldn't meet the Legion's future needs for, that they wanted from a potential buyer. So just to follow up on that work session we had. Yeah, Commissioner Laban?
Quick question, do they then release the moratorium for, for the Legion property then, so they could sell?
I believe so, Melissa, can you?
Commissioner Laban, no, the moratorium was adopted before that, and it's a seven-month-long moratorium, so that we can study the entire area surrounding Bets Park. It wasn't just specific to that property, so that is still in place.
And that's, and that's expected to remain in place for the full seven months?
It is. It is unlikely that we could get the work done sooner than seven months.
Okay, Commissioner Laban, do you have a Richfield School Board? Anything from there?
Well, I, you know, one of the things that I've been trying to do is I reached out to the superintendent and many school board members. One of the things that I'm interested in is, as we close the first semester, trying to get a sense of how, how well the delivery model for the learning has been through the very challenging COVID environment. Obviously, with the, I think the elementary kids are gonna be back in the classroom before the secondary kids. I did learn, unfortunately, there's a 45% fail rate at the high school. That means that at least one, or 45% of the students have at least one F. So clearly, I think that there's, you know, at least at the administrative level, there's opportunity for them to, to kind of go back and, and look what's working and what's not. So at the, at the next planning commission meeting, hopefully I'll have some update on what's changed for the next semester. That's, that's one of the, the items that we've talked about, because there seems to be, you know, some, some discussion going on about FaceTime and synchronous versus asynchronous learning. So that's still obviously being worked on it. And like I said, it's a very difficult environment, so, you know, more to come, I'm sure.
Thank you, Commissioner Laban. Transportation Commission, we lost our liaison to the Transportation Commission. We moved on to greener pastures. That will be up for grabs next month when we have our annual meeting, along with the other, all these will be reassigned. So next, Commissioner Sturza is new to the Chamber of Commerce liaison role. Do you have anything this month?
I have no update.
Okay, thank you. All right, then we have the city planners' reports. Staff, would you, you have, want to read your report?
Well, thank you. I just wanted to mention a couple of upcoming meetings to you that are listed on your agenda. We are going to be having a study session before the next planning commission meeting. We're going to discuss some potential ordinance changes, likely to, some modest changes to the home occupation rules. We'll be talking about, and there was a community-supported agriculture business running out of one of the residential districts that prompted us to relook at some of these. Also, COVID has really pushed people to operate more, more businesses out of their homes. And so talk a little bit about our experience and, and what we've seen through the neighborhoods, talk about those. Also, we'll be talking about some possible changes to the subdivision and plating regulations. Those are something that you don't see a lot of right now at planning commission, because they go straight to the City Council, but we are suggesting some changes. And you may be seeing more of that, things like lot splits, that kind of application. And then our regular meeting after that. And then just forecasting, I do believe that we're going to be having a joint work session with the City Council and HRA, either in February or March, to talk about some changes to our multifamily districts as well, updating some of those and looking at some equity concerns, and really focusing in on how to update those districts. So some work sessions coming up in the near future. And then I think Catherine wanted to talk a little bit procedurally about some changes that we'd like to institute at our meetings here. Catherine, did you, did you?
Sure, sure, I can do that. This is Chair Kwam. Staff and I, I had brought the idea to them if, about us reading, just like I did tonight with our change to amendment to the zoning designation, if we could start each. So I'll just read this. "The purpose of the introductory statement would be to help the audience understand the role and authority of the planning commission as we consider a particular type of application." Because as you know, it varies a little, three to one. What, what rubric are we looking at if we're talking about a variance versus a rezoning versus a conditional use permit? So just very short at the beginning, before we dive into the particulars of that one. And they'd be read right, right with a staff report. And hopefully, different people can read them and not just the chair, so we can have some little variety of voices going. And anything else you want to add to that, Melissa?
No, I, I just, I thought that was a good idea to help us frame the discussion, particularly for the audience, before we kind of dive into the staff report, just to set, to tee things up for everybody a little bit. We thought that that would be helpful.
Commissioner Penn?
Thank you. Is, so that intro statement, is that something that the staff distills as part of their regular report, or is that something that the chair puts together, done what they've read? I just want to make sure we remove any ambiguity in case we're unclear of that. So curious if you or, or if Melissa had any input on that.
Currently, the plan is for me and Melissa to just draft something, just like for tonight. And if you want to help with that, by all means, just email me. And, and once they're written up, we're just gonna kind of do them at. we're just going to kind of do them at per meeting, so we don't have to do all of them at once. Like, so tonight, we just, we drafted that together. And then next time, we don't know what will be on there, and we'll have something for that. But anybody could help with that. I just want to keep it really simple. And also, so then the public could, you know, gear their, their input toward what they have the most power to change, sway us on. So that's really the intent, and just for clarity. Thoughts, or anybody that wants to help with it, that would, that would be fine. It's not a real complicated project. It's just adding, adding that little neutral part at the beginning of what type of consideration it is. Is that clear, Commissioner Penn? Okay. You can help with it?
Sure, if you say, if you get it over early enough, I can look at it.
Okay, thanks. We should have a new commissioner next month and, well, our annual meeting. Yeah, Commissioner Levin?
Just a quick question, a clarification. The joint session, most of that you mentioned between council and HRA, that also is going to include planning commission?
Yes, a joint session with you, the council, and the HRA, yes.
Thank you.
This is Chair Quan. Melissa, does that mean two work sessions in February and a meeting?
We're working on the schedule right now. We do have them back-to-back, but we were reconsidering that tonight, and maybe pushing one of those to March to spread them out, just so you have enough time to really digest that material.
Melissa, do you have tentative dates?
Yes, the, the first work session is listed on your, in your packet tonight. It's February twenty-second before our next meeting. And that will likely be at six o'clock rather than five o'clock. We believe an hour will be enough. And the next one was scheduled for February twenty-third, but I believe we will bump that to March ninth. That's a Tuesday, assuming that works with the council and HRA schedules, so you can pencil those in.
All right. Other questions? Mr. Penn?
I have one question for staff. Is there any update on the bumper-to-bumper site, if that's proceeding, or is that just still hanging out there?
It is moving forward. There is a preliminary development agreement with NHH companies, but they are pursuing some tax credit financing, tax credit funding. And the cycles for those, I believe it's twice a year. I'm not particularly working on that project, but it is moving forward. It's just going to be slower as they apply for tax credits.
Just curious, thank you.
All right, that's it. I just, to repeat, our next meeting is Monday, February twenty-second at seven PM here on WebEx, virtual. And that brings us to the end of our meeting. Do we have a motion to adjourn?
I've got a quick question from Melissa before we. Do you know if there was a, Melissa, a agreement between the city and Chamberlain for maintaining the snow area, the street during snow emergencies?
What kind of agree?
So, so lately, this winter, I've noticed that quite a bit, most of the cars don't move at all on Sixty-eighth or even Richfield Parkway during snow emergencies. And the street is getting to be looking in pretty rough shape, as far as actually shrinking quite a bit. And I'm not sure if there was an agreement in place, but there's, there's, the parking is a huge mess. And I was, I, I thought because it was part of their numbers, whether there was an agreement in place or not, I just, you know, it, it's in rough shape.
Sure, Rudolph, we can talk to Public Works about that. There is an agreement to allow some street parking on Cedar Avenue, which is a very large, wide street, and not move those during snow emergencies. But I don't believe that's in place along Richfield Parkway. There's no special agreement there. So if there is an issue, I would recommend that you reach out to Public Works and let them know. I do know that public safety was out ticketing and towing in this last snow emergency. So I'm, I'm not sure what happened, particularly on Richfield Parkway, though.
Okay, thank you.
All right, that brings us to the end of our meeting. Would someone like to make a motion to adjourn?
Commissioner Penn, so moved.
Second?
Commissioner Rudolph, second.
All right, discussion? All right, Nellie, would you take role on this final item?
Yes, thank you. Chair Quan?
Aye.
Commissioner Levin?
Aye.
Commissioner Penn?
Aye.
Commissioner Rosenberg?
Aye.
Commissioner Rudolph?
Aye.
Commissioner Sturza?
Aye.
All ayes, the ayes have it, and the motion passes.
Thank you, everyone, have a good night. Good to see you again. Welcome, Ryan.